I'd like to call order to the regular city council meeting of Monday, February 22nd with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here, Councilmember Ratty.
Mayor Salerno, absent.
Smith?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Assistant City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here. Okay, if you could all stand, please, and please welcome, brand-new to Sparks and first-time at our council meeting, Pastor Carmy V. Woods from the Bethel AMI Church. Welcome, Pastor, and thank you.
Let us pray. Lord, we pause to give you thanks and praise for this day and for this opportunity to come in the beauty of this of your bright sunshine after the major Stokes Law. And, Lord God, we pray thy blessings upon this city council meeting now. We pray your blessings upon the leadership, its mayor, the council members, staff, those persons who are here. And pray, oh God, that you bless the agenda, that everything in the agenda, Lord God, may be pleasing to your sight. Bless now as we go forth in your name. In the name of Jesus we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Woods, that was very nice. Okay, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Smith, would you lead us?
If you'll join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. I don't have any cards. Anybody want to speak under public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. And one thing, if I could get a motion with the indulgence of the council, if we could take 6.7 and move it just before 6.1, so we have a bunch of students here and teachers and things that we need to take care of. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, given the exception of moving item 6.1, or, excuse me, 6.7 to before 6.1.
Do you have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next is recommendation to approve minutes of the regular meeting of January 15th, 2010, and February 8th, 2010. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the minutes of February 10th and January 25th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to 4.1, Presentation, Joining Forces Traffic Safety Program. Commander Allen, how are you? Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Allen, Sparks Police Department. I have Officer Carl Niebelheim. We're here with the council today, mayor, members of council, city staff. What we'd like to do today is just take a couple of minutes, hopefully, a very short amount of your time, to just go over the Joining Forces Traffic Safety Program that we have at the Sparks Police Department. Every once in a while, you, on the agendas, will come across agenda items, asking for grants, usually in a consent item, but we'd just like to take a moment today to just explain what it is that you're approving and where the funds are that you're approving us to spend go. So, what is Joining Forces? And I'll go through these pretty quick. Is, Joining Forces is a nationally-recognized program coordinated by the Office of Traffic Safety out of the state of Nevada, Department of Public Safety. What they do is they take federal grant monies from the TEA 21 and Safety Lou funds, and if you need an explanation of those, that's why I brought Carl, for law enforcement activities for traffic safety. Joining Forces assists in coordinating national, statewide, and local programs such as the campaigns of Click It Ticket, You Drink, You Drive, You Lose, all those commercials you see during, usually around the holidays, major sports events and stuff like that. Those are the programs that they pass down to the local level for us to try to reduce the amount of injury accidents and fatalities on our roads. It operates on the federal fiscal year, so a lot of times we'll see these grant funds come the end of October, early first part of November. The police department, in federal fiscal year 2009, was awarded $116,000 by the Office of Traffic Safety. This was the third-largest amount in the state, only behind Henderson and Las Vegas. So, we are very fortunate in the amount of funds that we receive, and a lot of that is due to the hard work of Officer Niebelheim and the success of the program. The Sparks Police Department participated in all 15 statewide campaigns on a regional and local level, and a campaign is just those things. The state will set out time periods for us to target certain types of traffic incidences, whether it's seatbelt enforcement, DUI enforcement, juvenile enforcement activities, and so each one of those is labeled a campaign. The state set 15 of those, and we participate in all 15. And why this is important is throughout the year, we get bonus points for how many campaigns we participate in and how well we participate in with other jurisdictions, and that will lead to further funding in the future for the police department. The Sparks Police Department was also selected for a special campaign this year dealing with juvenile seatbelt violators.
That was last year, isn't it?
Yes. So, we were selected, the only agency in the state to target juveniles and seatbelt violations.
I was going to say.
Yeah, all of them. That's right, those are the tickets. All of them. And the Sparks Police Department is recognized by the Office of Traffic Safety, Joining Forces, and I'll explain some of those recognitions a little bit later in this presentation. Statewide or regional efforts that we participated in, there is a motorcycle event in One Amaca called Run Amaca, and we send our officers out there to help that agency in their traffic enforcement activities. DUI checkpoints, we've participated in DUI checkpoints in all of the neighboring counties, Lyon County, Churchill, Carson City, and up at the lake, and they in turn help participate in ours, such as the one that we just did on Super Bowl Sunday. We have representatives from five, I believe, other law enforcement agencies helping us out on that DUI checkpoint.
Brian, did you have a checkpoint on Interstate 80 West after this morning?
That was a different type of checkpoint. It was an aerial checkpoint. And I do have photos on my phone, if you want to look at them later, of an airplane sitting on the freeway.
My only question, do we collect the appropriate landing fee?
Unfortunately, those go to the state. It was, they did land on the highway, so.
I marked it up, he was wearing a suit.
Again, I'd have to defer to NHP. Yes, you are. Pedestrian enforcement, we actually sent officers down to North Las Vegas to not only help in their enforcement, but learn the state-approved method of doing pedestrian enforcements that we bring back to our jurisdiction, and we've held several pedestrian enforcement campaigns, usually along the Rock Corridor and the Prater Way Corridor here, for the safety of our pedestrians. Our local efforts, these are the campaigns I was talking about, seatbelt enforcement for both adults and juveniles, DUI saturation patrol, farmer's market DUI patrol, DUI checkpoints, speeding enforcement, and pedestrian enforcement. So, these are all the overtime money that is given to us through the Office of Traffic Safety. These are the type of local efforts on top of and along with those statewide campaigns that we participate in. And here are some of the results from that. We spent all but $735.65 of the federal money that was given to us. Carl couldn't eke out those little bit extras. Almost 20, a little over 2,100 traffic stops, 5,200, 5,300 cars screened in DUI checkpoints, and gross fines of 600 and almost 30,000. What that is, is that is not revenue that we necessarily brought into the city. The way that we calculate gross fines is if someone were to simply write a check or pay the fines that's on the officer or on the ticket itself and just mailed it to the court, that's the amount of gross fines that we'd receive. Like many of us who have received tickets, we'd like sometimes to go to the court and follow on the mercy of the judges and get that number reduced. So, those fines are reduced normally at the court level. Insurance ones are, some of those are also statewide mandatory to be reduced. So, the gross fines is not a true accurate number of the total revenues that we brought in. The results of these campaigns, 335 seatbelt violations, almost 1,000 speeding tickets, 108 DUI IRS, that's just a staggering, staggering number. But the other part in there is warnings issued of 584. When a police officer pulls someone over during one of these campaigns, all the other motorists don't know necessarily whether they're getting a ticket or they're getting a warning, and it affects the driving behaviors of those passing that stop, as well as the person who was stopped. So, the amount of accidents reduced, the amount of incidences that never occurred is one thing in police work and crime prevention that is just really tough to gauge. But with this amount of efforts, we know that our accident and fatalities and injury accident numbers for last year's calendar year were dramatically reduced up to, I believe, over 15 percent. So, I would like to say that these had some effect on those numbers. And really quick, the recognitions. Your Sparks Police Department was awarded the Joining Forces Agency of the Year for the state of Nevada, largely on the part of the Joining Forces Coordinator of the Year, Officer Carl Niebelheim. So, Carl does an excellent job. He manages all of our grants of the Sparks Police Department. He schedules all 15 of those campaigns, making sure people are on overtime, making sure they're doing the right things, giving them the direction that they need to follow for each campaign, and he truly does do a tremendous job for our agency in administering this, these funds that we get, because, like every other grant, they normally come with stipulations and rules that we have to follow, and he does an excellent job of keeping us in that.
Okay, we have a question or comment. Mr. Schmidt?
What are you doing? Are you done?
Okay.
Other than the fact that we get 122,000 next year?
Well, that's great.
Yes.
It just amazes me that at these DUI checkpoints, and the mayor and I were just talking about it, that 335 people weren't wearing their seatbelt, and I know they're in line waiting to get checked. Or, you know, like, I think the last one, you had a Super Bowl, you had four DUIs, you had, the rest of them were no insurance, no seatbelts, no license and everything. It just amazes me that the people that are out there driving.
Would you have gone four-wheeling it out of there?
I don't know.
It'd been right in reverse.
Part of the DUI checkpoints is there has to be an available escape route, per se, but there's also legal statutes that say we can then follow those cars and make appropriate stops and track them down as well. So, the cars that try to avoid the checkpoints aren't necessarily getting away.
Cut and run, you're dead anyway.
So.
Any other questions? Is that it, Brian?
That is it, and I just want to say, you know, thank you for always approving these funds for us, and I hope that we're putting, I think this shows that we're trying to put these funds to the best use that we can. So, thank you for your time.
Carl, anything?
Nope, that's it. I just brought Carl along, because if you had to ask any questions, I was going to have to defer to him anyways, so I just thought I would bring him along and also just, again, give him some praise of the job he does administering these grants.
Brian, thanks. Good job, Carl. Appreciate it, really. Okay, next is consent items 5.1 through 5.5. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve Consent Items 5.1 through 5.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next we'll move on to 6.7, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action on the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities Youth Award Program Applications. You can handle this, Linda, and then I would like you maybe to have each of the students get up and introduce themselves, please.
Okay, all right. The Nevada League of Cities Council, or, I should say, Linda Patterson, City Clerk, for the record. The Nevada League of Cities and Municipal Youth Award Program is an annual scholarship program that recognizes public community service and encourages our young people to become involved in their community. This year, there's been a few changes made since the agenda, since the staff report was created. There will be three students that are high school students, be competing for a $500 scholarship, three students that will be competing for a high school senior scholarship, which is $1,000. In the past, the city has had to pay for those scholarships. This year, the Nevada League of Cities is going to be paying for that. We had Councilwoman Ratty and Councilman Kerrigan come in on Thursday and Friday and did 15 interviews with these wonderful students behind us, and have made their selections of who we're going to send on to the League of Cities as our representatives from the city of Sparks. Just so we can brag a little bit, we've done really well in past years. Our students have been very well represented and selected as the winners for the last three or four years. I'm going to let Councilwoman Ratty make the recommendation of who will be sent as the qualified students, but as the mayor said...
May I introduce myself first?
As the mayor said, I would like to have each of the students come up and have their moment on television and give their names and whatever else they want to say.
Yeah, please give us the school that you're representing too, please.
They're all Sparks.
Ah, geez. I'm really surprised. I'm very surprised that these students are all from Sparks High School.
And I would like to recognize Kathryn Betts, the Sparks High School teacher who causes all this to happen. Kathryn, would you come up and just say a word?
Please, come on, Kathryn.
Come on, Kathryn.
Well, most of you know me, but the reason I do this is I'm also a graduate of Sparks High School, as is Mayor Martini.
Yes.
He's a little ahead of me. But during my senior year, I was there, just a little.
Thanks for bringing me down to earth, Kathryn.
Oh, and you too. Okay, oh, sorry.
She's a youngster.
During my senior year, I was just unaware of the opportunities out there and did not plan to go to college, even though I was graduating in the top 20 of my class. And had it not been for an astute counselor coming to me and saying, "You need to go to college," and giving me some help, I would have never known what to do. So, when I went back to Sparks High School to teach 20 years ago, I made it my mission to pay her back. And thankfully, I get to work with kids like this. It makes every day just a true joy. So, thank you for recognizing them.
You bet.
Thank you, students.
Okay, if you want, if you want to come up, one by one, and just look up and tell us who you are. Come on.
Can I ask about, yes?
Okay. Come on, don't be bashful, come on.
My name is Mayne Smart.
Alyssa Addington.
My name is Nicole Longland.
My name is Alura Addington.
My name is Lynda Nelson.
Hello, hi, I'm Savannah Meakin.
I'm Mommy Shannon.
Okay, well, come on. Come on, Mommy, get up and tell us who you are.
Shannon Comstock, Savannah Meakin's mother.
Hi, I'm Abigail Macias.
What happened to you?
I'm Abby's friend.
Can you miss it?
Jahai Mazariego.
Pip Cipangar.
Ricardo Bravo.
Amos Quintino.
Well, congratulations, all of you. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Come on, students.
I can't hide the back.
I'm Janet Ayala.
And I'm Maria Goine.
Okay. Well, thanks for all being here, and congratulations. Take it away.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say that this is an impossible task, to narrow this fabulous group of students down to any number of students that are, that you can point to one reason why they should be moved forward and everybody shouldn't be moved forward. So, I really do wish that there was a way that we could advance all of you to the competition, of course. We're not allowed to do that, so we did have to make some tough decisions. I did also, Lynda noted it, but because we do think you are all fabulous, we do find it in these tough budget times, I know it's not enough to pay for your whole college, but we do award $200 to every student who's applied, because you are, we really, Mike and I were so sincerely impressed with the work that you've done. Your high school careers are, have been incredible, and so that's a small token, a gesture from the city, that hopefully will help you to advance your careers, every single one of you, because really, every single one deserves this award. So, I would say that, before I get to the names, Mike, do you want to say anything?
No, I was really impressed. Both my kids graduated from Reed High School, so I didn't see anybody from Reed, so I just wanted to thank you for doing what you're doing, because that's kind of the same thing happened to me when I was in high school, that nobody said anything about going to college until it was too late for me, and, but, sharp, sharp bunch of students, I was really impressed. One private in the Guards, raise your hand. She's already a private in the National Guard. It was, it was really tough. Julie and I arm-wrestled, so that's how we did it.
She won.
Clearly.
But anyway, I was really impressed. You should all be proud, and I know you're going to do really well in college. I know half of you are probably going to stay here, go to UNR. I know there's a whole bunch going to Pac-10 schools, so that's good, too. So, good job.
So, I think what, the other thing that I did want to say is that none of you admitted, at least to us in the interview process, that you would consider running for an elected office as one of your goals in the future. And so, while you're sitting here thinking about it right now, I just want you to put that on your radar screen, because we do need the brightest and the best to step up and consider taking on these public service jobs and representing your peers and making the tough decisions for our communities as we move forward. So, I hope you'll all consider that at some point. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read the folks who weren't accepted first, just to build a little bit of drama, right? We'll get a drum roll somewhere, and then we'll talk about who was, who's going to move forward to the 500 and the $1,000. And again, if we could send you all, we would, but these are the folks who will be getting $200 from the city of Sparks right off the bat, so Alura Addington? Come and grab us. Alyssa Addington? Ricardo Bravo? Carla Gomez? Jahai Mazariego? Yeah, well, I'm going to probably fail here pretty quickly, but we'll see. Lynda Nelson? And Pip Shringaram? Not even close, I know. There's a lot of letters there. We just call him Pip. Pip. You get a handshake for every, on everybody, yeah. Okay, and then the folks that we're going to be sending forward to compete, and just so you all understand, so it's a League of Cities, so you'll be competing against students from all the other cities across the state, so the folks who will be competing for the $500 scholarship are Megan Smart. Congratulations, Megan, nice job. Nilu? And Hermes Quintino. And then, you're probably getting close to figuring it out, our competitors for the $1,000 scholarship are Janet Ayala Ojeda. Nice job. Savannah Meakin? And Abigail Macias. Well done. And again, well done to all of you, just so proud that you are from Sparks.
Congratulations to all of you, and Kathryn, thank you so much. I'm, every year, I'm so proud of Sparks High School and being a graduate, so thanks for all you do, and good luck to those that are going to be competing. And thanks for being here today. Anybody else have a comment? Mr. Kerrigan?
Yeah, you might want to stick around, because we have to vote on the money for you, so I don't want you to leave, because I want you to watch everybody, so make sure that we, we don't take the money back.
Mr. Schmidt?
Because we have to, we have to vote on it, so don't leave yet.
That's a lesson in advocacy. Don't leave the chambers until the vote is finished.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just follow up with one comment Ms. Ratty has had in regards to public service. We do have a Reed High School student right now that serves on our Citizens Advisory Board. And that high school student will be moving off that board in August, when she goes off to college out of state. I know a lot of you already chose them to go to college out of state, but if you're in-state, there's opportunities today, it doesn't have to be running for office, to help serve the city of Sparks. I'm an advocate of having a high school student or a young college student on our Citizens Advisory Board. So, no matter where you live in the city, there's an opportunity to go ahead and serve in some capacity in the city as a volunteer, and we'd be welcome and look forward to seeing you in the future. Good luck. Thank you.
Mr. Kerrigan?
Yeah, without further ado, I'd like to make that motion that we, as a Spark City Council, award $200 to each of the students to help them with their college expenses.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the $200 for each student participating. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Again, thank you, thank you all for being here, Kathryn. Again, thank you so much for all you do for your students. It's really a wonderful, wonderful thing. Thanks. Now, you can, you can leave, if you want to stick around and watch the rest of this stuff, you can. It's not a problem. Okay, next, 6.1, Consideration and Possible Approval of Renewing the City's Membership with the National League of Cities. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record. This is something that we've done on an ongoing basis, and back in May, on May 26th of 2009, even though memberships and association fees were part of the budget, it was asked by the council that they be brought up at the time that they were invoiced or it was time to renew for individual consideration. This would be the time and place to consider whether the city of Sparks, which has been a member of the National League of Cities since 1990, would like to continue its membership. The annual membership fee to belong to this national association, which we do get an awful lot of benefit from, is $5,401.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, the renewal period on this is May 1st through April 30th, 2011, May 1st, 2010, April 30th, 2011. Is it appropriate for us to... 30th, 2011. May 1st, 2010, April 30th, 2011. Is it appropriate for us to be doing this now or wait until we have final budget numbers to authorize this? I mean, I'm, you know, last, we're working for $1.7 million worth of budget cuts. I know this is only $5,000, but by May the 1st, we're going to be, you know, a lot more fine-tuned with those budget numbers. And I would rather, I'd rather see us hold on to this issue until it's not, it doesn't seem to be any immediate need, other than we've received an invoice. And I can tell you from serving on the Board of Directors of the National League of Cities, they got cities that are a year behind on their invoices and still considering members. So...
Mr. Schmidt, Steve Driscoll, for the record, it certainly is the, the pleasure of the Council as to the action they want to take. And if they want to defer this payment until after the budget discussion in the April timeframe, it would be your prerogative to do so.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, Steve, I'm, I'm just about as lukewarm as you can get on, on the National League of Cities. I know that we, you know, that we joined the Nevada League of Cities for another year, but didn't we take away most of our travel from the City Council? I don't think we have. I, I'm not sure if you remember or not, but I think we took most of it away, didn't we?
At this point, Mr. Carrigan, Steve Driscoll, again, for the record, travel, as well as some of the other things that are directly linked to you as a council member, you have made choices individually or collectively, and travel is one of the things that has been taken mostly out, not all, but most of it was out. There are some commitments that we've had for different organizations, which have allowed members of your panel to continue to do at least through this year. So for the most part, at this point, the two major functions, which one is in March, and then one is in a different time of the year for the two big conferences, you've had at, at least one person going recently. We used to have more. But there are, there are webinars that come through and classes that we participate that this helps defer some of those costs. And there are periodic information that comes through that we do use. So it is a membership that we've been very active with. You as a board, having members sitting on different committees, as well as different individual boards within it, this city has been very active, not only here, but because of their activeness at the National League, we've been recognized and we remain to be leaders at the Nevada League at the same time. So it is something that you have actively done for a very small dollar amount, based on the type of association that you're talking about.
Yeah, and I know that most of us sit on a board. I sit on one. But, you know, I haven't been to the League of Cities because of the travel crunch for a couple of years now. So I, and that's just my feeling. I'm not sure what kind of bang we get for the buck and if, what's going to happen if we just opt out for a year. I mean, I'm not exactly sure. And like Ron said, there's some cities that owe money for a year, so I'm not real sure. But anyway, I just thought I'd voice my opinion on it. I'm not really, like I said, luk, I'm pretty lukewarm on this.
Ms. Ratty?
I, um, so I guess as a new council member, I really do appreciate the information and the opportunities that the League of Cities provides. And just philosophically, I'm, I'm a believer in associations. I think that they're a great place, whatever your field is, to share best practices, learn from your peers, you know, there's opportunities for training. So I value associations, and I do that in my personal life and my business life. I think, for me, it's all about very limited resources and priorities, and it's all relative now. So for me, it just doesn't get to the top of the pile in terms of the things that we should be spending money on right now with the money that we have available. I'm also happy to defer it until April, just to see if there's something that's changed about our situation. I don't anticipate there would be a significant change in our situation. But, so I'm happy to defer it, but I'm, this would second with Mr. Carrigan's comments that, given all of the things that we're not able to do right now, if I have $5,000 to spend, I would probably spend it locally in, you know, keeping us more engaged in our community and some of the things that we might be letting go locally than I would at the national level.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think the, the council has been restricted in the last few years. There's, you know, no funds available. I know that our convention's coming on up and only one can be paid for the city. And I think, I think there's two of us that are paying our own dime, our own way to go back. So, you know, this is, this is something that this membership actually cost us as individuals to, to participate in. And I come up with another idea. So someone will be back in DC in two weeks, maybe with the counsel's indulgence, that we could just, you know, table this item and give me some authorization to meet with the folks with the National League of Cities and see if I can negotiate a price on this. You know, I'd like staff to give us a bullet sheet of the number of layoffs we've had, or foreclosure rates, things that, you know, they talk about all the time, and I can bring that directly home to them and give them an offer to, to, you know, this is a situation, you're asking for $5,400 for our membership to a city that, you know, has laid off 22% of our workforce. Probably not a good combination, but, you know, if there's a, if there's a price we could agree upon as a, as a, you know, renegotiation of dues, I'm not sure they'll do it, but I think it's worth a try. And then we can bring it back in, in May, or when I return from DC. I'll make that a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Carrigan?
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to defer and have Mr. Schmidt contact National League of Cities for a reduction in, of the payment to National League of Cities. Is that correct, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, sir. And if I could ask, Steve, if we could have Hanya in DC, make a couple phone calls and see what time is available with the folks back there to, to talk about this. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay. Thanks, Steve. Consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Regional Planning Commission. Are you doing this, too, Steve?
I'm prepared, sir, if you'd like me to.
Go for it.
Thank you again, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record. This item is based on, as of January 1st, there was a vacancy in your Regional Planning Commission. At that meeting, the commission itself recommended that Jackie Peterson be appointed to serve on the commission, and that that appointee would, would serve the remainder of her four-year term, would expire June 30th, 2011. This does become a mayor appointment with the Council confirming your recommendations, sir.
I talked with Jackie one other time before, and this has been a while back, was not interested in doing this, but she served as an alternate for a couple of times, a couple of meetings, and enjoyed what she was doing. And it was something different than she had seriously anticipated. So she's very willing to do this, and I think she's been on the Planning Commission well long enough to be able to do this. Mr. Smith?
I think it's a good choice. I move to confirm the mayor's, mayor's recommendation for appointment of Jackie Peterson to the Regional Planning Commission.
Do you have a second? Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to approve Jackie Peterson for regional planning. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Steve. Okay, 6.3, consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 3173, providing for the interlocal contract between the City of Sparks and the State of Nevada Employees' Deferred Compensation Committee with Hartford Life Insurance Company. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Chris Ziererson, Human Resources, and Jenny Lewis, Human Resources. The city currently provides two deferred compensation programs, one through ICMA and one through Hartford, which is negotiated through the State of Nevada Employees Defined Benefit Program. As you can see from the agenda item, the interlocal agreement that we had, had expired. And this is a renewal of that agreement.
Questions? Okay, I'm not looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
I'll make a motion, approve Resolution Number 3173. I'll mind my staff.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve Agenda Item 6.3, Resolution Number 3173. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you, ladies. 6.4, consideration and possible approval of an appointment of two city council members to the Recovery Zone Facility Bond Intergovernmental Subcommittee. Ms. Cluit?
Kathy Cluit, Government Affairs Analyst. This item before you is in response to some of the American Recovery Reinvestment Act bonds that are coming out from the federal government. Washoe County and City of Reno were both given the opportunity to, to have these bonds. Sparks was not because based on our, on our population, it had to be over 100,000. As you read in the report, Sparks are, you know, we didn't get the money, but Washoe County and City of Reno would like Washoe, would like Sparks to be on the Subcommittee to give out these bonds, the opportunity for the bonding, because they, they feel that some of the projects that are going to be coming either through or in Sparks. So they wanted us to have some sort of say in this. The, if you decide that you want to participate in the Subcommittee, we would need two people to step forward to do it. Mr. Carrigan has expressed an interest in being one of the people, one of the persons. And the bonds have to be issued and done by December of 2010. So the anticipation is that the Subcommittee will be done with their work by September of 2010. So it's not ongoing, it's not forever. How often you would be meeting, I have no idea. That's going to depend on what kind of projects come in and how they're vetted.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I would like to nominate Councilman Carrigan and Councilwoman Ratty for this position.
I think first, you have to say that you want to play.
Okay, we want to play.
Pick who you want to play.
So we have to, you need any?
Two separate motions?
It's, it's kind of two separate motions, but it is the same motion. I mean, you do have to say that you would like to participate in a Subcommittee and then you can nominate.
Okay, I'm looking for it right here.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I move to approve participation in the Recovery Zone Facility Bond Intergovernmental Subcommittee, and I appoint, or I nominate Councilman Carrigan and Councilwoman Ratty.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to join the committee and to nominate Mr. Carrigan and Ms. Ratty on the committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Wait a minute here. Now, please vote. Passed unanimously. You got another one? You're done.
Well, I just want to let you know that as part of this, there is an MOU, and that will be coming before you in two weeks. It's, that will, so you have Reno's looking at it tomorrow, and signing it tomorrow, and then Washoe County will do it on Wednesday.
Ms. Ratty?
Did want to comment that I appreciate the other jurisdictions, Reno and Washoe County, reaching out and including us. They didn't necessarily have to do it. I think it's the right thing to do because it's representative of the whole county. But I do want to appreciate that, that action.
It's a great opportunity. It really is. It's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, 6.5, and probably can present on both Pete 6.5 and 6.6. Consideration and possible approval of Fire Station Number 4 Photovoltaic Project and Fire Station Number 5 Photovoltaic Project. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Pete Etchar, Deputy Public Works Director, for the record. Item 6.5 and 6.6 says a consideration of award of two ground-mounted photovoltaic systems in Fire Station Number 4 and Number 5. And these projects are based on the price-per-watt contract with Steve C. Hamilton, Inc., that was approved by Council on December 14th. And each of these, these projects will be 36.8 kilowatts in size, which will provide about 75 to 90% of the building usage, each, electrical usage, each of these sites. The cost is $174,576 each. And the important factor is that these will be 100% paid for by NV Energy Solar Generations Rebates, not only for this project, but will be using some money from the Larry Johnson rebates that, that project's currently being completed. This is just an illustration of what the ground-mounted mounting system looks like. Approximately for these projects will be about 160 feet long. And where they'll be located, this is Fire Station 4, and the panels will be located to the east of the fire station, kind of up on that hill, and right by where those warehouses are. And at Fire Station 5, it'll be located to the south of the fire station, between the fire station and the maintenance building at Golden Eagle Regional Park. And these projects are really in line with our major goal of our Sustainability Action Plan, which is namely increasing our renewable energy generation, and also reducing our, our electrical build. We also have six more planned projects after these two fire stations, Larry Johnson, and those are listed here. Two phases at the police station, each about 118 kilowatts, one at Larry Johnson, which is in the parking lot, to kind of go with the one that's on the roof, one at the rec center, 118 Richards, and two at Golden Eagle Regional Park. These are the six that we really want to pursue this year. Now, the solar generations applications are again opening up on March 24th, and there's been a lot of changes to the program, and they're still evolving. I've been in meetings the last couple of weeks on, on what these changes are going to be. But the biggest change is going to be that the rebates are going to go up from 30-kilowatt systems to 100-kilowatt systems. And that's, that's big for us. And the rebates are $5 a watt. So, you know, doing the math, that's $150,000 in rebates per project, up to $500,000. And so we're really going to go after these six projects and try to get our applications in. And we kind of have a competitive advantage. We want to take advantage of it because one of the changes to the program is, is that you now have to go in with a contract. And you have approximately 15 months to get the projects done. So they're not even long, or you can just put an application in and just sit on it for years. You have to have the contract. Well, because you took action and approved the price-per-watt contract, we can now come back to you with the individual projects with a proposal, and we're ready to go. We'll be working with our finance department on cash flow on these projects. We'll be working with our contractor, Steve C. Hamilton, Inc., on how to get these projects done. And we'll be back to you with more specifics as we have them. I also want to thank our purchasing department a lot for this, because they've really worked hard on doing this cost-per-watt bid. It's something, it's innovative, and it hasn't really been done before here, and so really looking forward to that. And with that being said, the Larry Johnson Community Center, I want to make sure you're aware of the media event we're going to have on Monday, March 8th. And these are some pictures of the finished product, and we should be online here in the next week, with us actually starting to produce power. So they'll be Monday, March 8th, at 10:30. And with that, we recommend the award of these two projects to Steve C. Hamilton, Inc., and I'm here, as well as the contractor, if you have any questions.
Questions for Pete. Thanks, Pete. Ms. Ratty?
As you know, my, some of my favorite topics, the solar projects and the conservation projects. I'm curious, these are very exciting. I'm curious on the Larry Johnson project, because it is at a community center and particularly at a youth center. Have, have we done anything to, like, speak with Boys and Girls Club or do anything around public education on those? I know we've been, I know you in particular have been moving quickly on, on making sure a lot of these get done. But are there opportunities for some public education on that one in particular?
There is great opportunity for education on these. In fact, one of the requirements of the solar generations program is that you have an educational component. So not only will we be, we're working toward having all these on the internet, so you can look anytime you want in real time to see how much energy is being produced in any of these sites, but actually Larry Johnson will have a monitor, a flat-screen monitor in the entryway that'll be showing real-time data as far as how much is being produced, how much has been produced, like, this year, how much is the cost savings. It'll have all the information. So having youth be able to come in, see it, you know, see what's going on, I think it's a great opportunity.
Great. And then my next question is, I'm totally supportive of the changes to the NV Energy rebate program. There were so many that were just sitting out there and not getting used because folks weren't, you know, it was just a land grab at the very beginning, and then folks weren't getting around to using them. So I think that's fantastic, and I'm glad we're well positioned to use that. I'm curious, with the increase to the larger projects, which projects do we have that are best suited for that larger usage?
The one that's probably the most suited is the Police Station Phase 1, which is 118 kilowatts, which is basically 100 kilowatts when you get to the AC side, which is what the rebate is. That is, we have funding through the RF funds, the stimulus money, to actually build it. And then if we can get the rebate, then we can use that rebate to continue just kind of dominoing down, doing more and more projects. That's our goal. One of the changes in the program is that one agency can only have up to 25% of the available capacity. The available capacity for this coming year is 800 kilowatts approximately. So the most we could get would be 200 kilowatts. But, you know, we're competing for that 800 kilowatts with every community in the state. So are we going to only get one project? Could we possibly get two? And we're going to go after as much as we can get. But, you know, I'll, I'll keep you guys informed as this process goes. And obviously, I want to get all these six done as, as fast as we can. If we were able to build all six of these projects, including the three that we already have going, we could save the city about $120,000 a year, based on current energy costs. But, you know, energy costs fluctuate. You know, we just heard news that, you know, they went down this year. But then again, from 2005 to 2009, they went up 34%. So, you know, they bounce around. So it's, it's imperative that we continue to push as hard as we can to get all these projects done. I'd say that the fires, Police Station, I'm sorry, is the, probably the key project we want to get done this year. And then if we can get Police Station Phase 2 both done, that would be wonderful.
That'd be success. Well, I want to, Pete, give you personally a lot of credit. I think you're being incredibly innovative and really being aggressive on getting this done. And I don't, you know, you read what, no offense, David, but you read in the paper about what Reno's doing all the time, and there's a lot of great, great conservation and solar energy things that are happening in, in Sparks. And I'm, I, I think you take a lot of credit for that.
Well, I appreciate that, and I thank our team we have in the Public Works Department and our sustainability team. and our sustainability team, and also regionally, because we really do work closely with Reno and Washoe County and the other agencies on these green projects. If it wasn't for them, I, I don't think I could keep up.
Is that it? Mr. Smith?
Pete, I'd echo what Julia said. Somebody's got to take the lead on this, and you've done a great job on it, and it's really appreciated up here. I have a question on Station Number Four. You're going to locate the panels to the east. Now, does that affect the piece of property that was for sale? That's, we own that piece of property right to the east of that?
Correct.
Please do.
And I've received inquiries before on that, and it's really hard to see in this picture. I wish it was a different color, but there's like a little purple line on there, which is actually the property line.
I see it.
Yeah, that, that's where the property is. And actually, we're not going to go any further than where those warehouses are, that, that orange area, really, we're not going to extend that far to the east. We'll end kind of where the warehouse is in, and so we will definitely not interfere with any property transaction that could happen.
Now, these are ground, ground level. Do we fence them in? How do we protect them?
You know, right now, we're not planning on fencing them in, and really, the history as far as vandalism goes is there really hasn't been much. I mean, we've seen some out in different areas.
Mike lives in that neighborhood. You gotta be careful.
I got my spray paint.
Yeah, but you work in that neighborhood.
I work down the street. Really, no problems.
We have experienced it, and the people I've talked to, we have it. If we need to fence them, we'll fence them, but, you know...
These don't work, these don't work like the things you see out in the garden where the flies fly up against them and they zap them, doesn't it?
Okay.
But, you know, Fire Station Five, obviously, I think being right next to the fire station is going to help, and being right next to the maintenance station should help, and even with Fire Station Four, there is a, you know, a fire station right there. We're not anticipating it at this time, but we do have some force account in there, and that's one thing I was thinking about with force account. If we have to decide, we go forward with the fencing.
Okay. Good job, Pete. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, 6.5, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the contract for Fire Station Number Four Photovoltaic Project to Steve C. Hamilton, Inc., in the amount of $174,576.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve 6.5, the Station Number Four. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, 6.6, Ms. Ratty?
Are we, does anybody have any questions specifically on this one? Are we ready for a motion?
No, no questions.
Okay, great. I move to approve the contract for the Fire Station Number Five Photovoltaic Project to Steve C. Hamilton, Inc., in the amount of $174,576.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve 6.6, the upgrades for Fire Station Number Five. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Ah, my fault, boys. Let me clear it, and let's do it again. Holy Hannah. Okay, please vote. It's like the first time I've seen this system. Okay, passed unanimously. Thanks, Pete. Keep up the good work with you and the team.
Thank you.
Okay, next is 6.8, possible motion to conduct a closed-door session to discuss labor issues. We need to do this, Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I need about 10 minutes of the council's time on a specific labor issue.
Looking for a motion? Mr. Carrigan?
Can we do it after the redevelopment and then secure?
Yep, make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to move to conduct a closed-door session right after the redevelopment agency meeting. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, planning is nothing. Comments from the city council or city manager? Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one announcement. The city account, the City of Sparks, currently has one vacancy on the Truckee River Fund Advisory Committee. The committee meets every two months to review projects with potential benefit for the river. Applicants should be familiar with the Truckee River watershed and have the technical expertise to evaluate and select projects. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.Cityofsparks.us. Click on Governing on the webpage, then click on Boards, Commissions, Get Involved, and then click on Community Service Application. Questions may be directed to Dr. Tracy Turner at the Community Foundation of Western Nevada, phone number 333-5487. Applications will be accepted until the close of business Friday, February 26th, 2010.